Today is February 25. It is about 6:05. And this is the meeting of the Bradwell Planning Commission. I forgot to print the agenda. I printed everything else, but the first thing we'll deal with is minutes. Does anybody have any comments on last week? Anything on last meeting's minutes? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Do we have a forum?
We do. I suppose technically should announce that formally the town plan has been adopted by the Select Board as of last, was it Wednesday, Rod? Tuesday. Gosh.
It was so late, it could have been Wednesday.
Yeah. There were no changes made to it from what we discussed at our February 14 meeting, or February 11, excuse me. And that will end our town plan involvement for a little while. Are we going to start drafting the next one now?
Take a minute off.
Okay. Are there any other announcements? Okay, there's no public here tonight, so if the people at home are wondering why we're not doing a public comment, that's why. The next item on the agenda is the downtown designation application.
We're in the process of giving the application for a new Bradwell downtown designation. We just left orders to authorize application back in February. And there's community redevelopment program that they like to have, that they, the state downtown program, likes to have organizations. And we have the owners and the like. In the past, the planning commission has signed off on that. Community redevelopment includes a map of the area which is staying the same as it is now. So that's pretty much Depot Street, that's the southern end, across to the, the, and I've got this.
This one on here?
Yeah.
It goes to the musical center downtown area, and then courthouse.
The courthouse.
The courthouse is as well, and so is the park. Twelve's down from the park.
Okay.
You know what I mean. That one.
I...
Well, doesn't it go to that other street where the Tomnics is and so forth?
No.
Yeah, it doesn't.
We brought this up at the DRB meeting last week, and I remember actually our fair camera woman, Ms. Turner, had some comment, and I don't remember what the substance of it was, but I sort of noted that there was an issue out there. Do you guys know what it is?
Could be any information.
Do you mind doing it for the microphone so the people at home can hear?
No, what we're having was the order of the Blues Cafe, and the store owners around the corner of Tegro Lot feel reluctant that they're not part of the downtown program too. Because there's all kinds of stores there, and they said that they've tried to get a grant, they don't even, they said, "What, are they now?"
No, they're in there.
Are they now?
No, they're always at them.
They always at them. All right.
Huh. Well, that's helpful. Thank you. Is there anything else more to say on that? Do we want to have a vote?
I think, yeah, some kind of motion to, maybe?
Can we just, can you just describe what it is and what its good points are?
The downtown designation?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. This thing, I think, just clicked off and says "Battery low."
Yeah, it's entirely possible.
Yeah.
Probably not multitasked or talking to James at the same time.
I'm sorry to interrupt your question.
That's okay. Let's prep that.
Okay.
So the downtown designation program is a program operated by the state of Vermont, and the purpose of it is to reflect the historic significance of, let me see what it is called, traditional downtowns. And so there are access to certain other programs, including historic tax credits for downtowns, that a downtown designation can allow people to access those tax credits. And it's sort of the centerpiece, in some ways now, of the state planning agencies work. And the idea is to organize communities to have downtown improvement districts, or what they call a special, special taxes district. So there's a special tax that goes along with the downtown designation for the property owners inside the designated area, and those funds are used to support downtown promotion organization in our instance that's built in a better program. So it can coordinate, facilitate access to other grant programs, including the past year, that facade restoration program, load, loan, just a pretty long program that enabled the restoration, historically appropriate restoration of several storefronts and so forth. So it's a program of many smaller moving parts, but basically it's a vehicle for obtaining access to grant funds and support the state to preserve and support fiber of downtowns.
Is it the same as, I've seen in other states?
Yeah.
It's based on the Main Street approach.
Right. I was just going to say, is it actually registered trademark called Main Street? And there, the state is a participant in that program basically, or utilize that model.
Thank you.
I'm just going to note, does Julia use this to make the minutes? Okay, well, in case the recorder didn't pick up the first 10 minutes of our meeting, it's 6:10 now. We approved our minutes by a four to nothing vote. The only announcements were that the town plan was formally approved by the Select Board, or adopted, I guess, and there was no public comment, and we just discussed the downtown designation application.
And Jim has joined us.
And Jim has joined us.
Thank you.
Although, since we didn't note who's here...
We could fill her in on the guests.
So, is there anything else we want to talk about related to the downtown designation applications? Is that going to help the Brooks House redevelopment?
Yeah, well, yeah, let's put it this way, if for some reason rather than the town had decided not to renew the downtown designation, the Brooks House project would not be eligible for obtaining historic tax credits. So yes.
That would probably be really bad, right?
Do we need to vote on anything regarding the downtown designation district, or is this just a foreign information thing right now?
Who signs the thing? Is it me?
The chair and the chairman.
Well, I don't, I'll move to, I'll make a motion that I sign the application for the downtown designation.
I'll second it.
Okay. And any further discussion? Okay, so...
I have a question, actually. Can you say that again, that the Brooks House could not get, wouldn't be eligible for historic tax credits if the town wasn't participating in the downtown designation program?
Is that the state historic tax credit? Is it federal?
Yes, yeah. I think it would be eligible for federal, but not for state.
Not eligible for state historic designation tax credits if we are not...
Historic tax credits.
Okay.
But that's different if the building's on the historic register, that's a whole other ballgame.
Right. Yeah, you could still be eligible, I don't know about the eligibility for federal tax credits.
And does this also have to go through town meeting for something to happen with it?
No. No, what we're discussing here, oh, you mean the tax credits, or you mean...
No, just the whole downtown designation thing.
No, what you missed is, in the past...
Sorry.
You've had, no, we've had certain town committees support the application, and so we're just discussing it.
Okay. I only ask because I know that, I know that something about that was going to come up at the town meeting, and I just want to be prepared for whatever the...
Yeah, this is separate, this is the budget, this is separate.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So five, nothing. EPA Building Blocks for Sustainable Communities Program.
We mentioned that at the last meeting, how we set up that we were awarded technical systems through the EPA Building Blocks Program. And Brad and I had a comments call last week with staff member from the EPA at Boston, and then their contractor who will be delivering the workshop. And he is a planner. So the dates are going to be April 16 and 17, and the 16th probably will be some sort of date presentation, and the 17th will be the workshop. And it's going to be similar to the ARP workshop, where, you know, the morning session will kind of be a discussion of the issues and educational techniques, maybe site visit, that kind of thing. And the afternoon is how do we go about enacted changes. And so we're focusing on liberal rural districts, and how do we protect liberal characters, probably specifically related to setting different densities in rural areas, really very much clustering their techniques to help us transition from projects to...
Can this workshop help us provide the evidence necessary for the changes to zoning that were to be considered in the town plan?
We hope that through the educational process that that will help to be set up initially.
When is that again? April 16?
April 16, it's Tuesday, and then the 17th. The actual workshop will be on the 17th. So it'd be great to have a commitment of planning commissioners who can attend there, and try to structure it, even so that you can't attend the morning meeting, you can attend the afternoon. But kind of moving the, implementing things for the workshop is going to come through the planning commission, so it's great for everybody to experience. We're at the point where we're going to have to figure out who the stakeholders will be, and which they have to be. It could be up to any number, but obviously we're seeing people that would have a debt somewhere in the commission.
You mean like building owners, or town officials? What would you say stake owners?
It could be town officials, it could be property owners. So a couple off the top of my head, I think would be useful, there are some DRB members there, some transportation officials there, probably the best Bradwell Association.
The farmer who came to the Select Board?
Thurber.
Yes, Thurber, and maybe other farmers, maybe the Land Trust. People who feel that benefit from the information, contribute, you know, in any way, representative to the area, engineer.
We also felt that, given how competitive the grant process was, and how the state has a general, like, positive attitude towards communities reviewing their zoning ordinance, regulations from the standpoint of smart growth principles, that we would reach out to state officials as well. May, you know, benefit from the workshop, and also can maybe support the workshop in other ways to do the mission. So we're looking at a pretty wide cross-section of stakeholders.
Friends and close.
Big happy party.
So if you can think of anybody, maybe for the next meeting, or start generating lists of, maybe the stakeholders.
So I know you sent me one in the mail, but I wasn't able to get home before I came here. Can I get an agenda so I can take some, oh, it's over there. Sorry. I would have done that myself.
Did that about cover that?
What's that?
Does that about cover that?
Yeah, I think there'd be more news as we move towards the workshop, and the first conference call that we had was pretty good, and the next is the person assigned to us from the Boston office of the EPA, spent the month for a kind of field visit, so that we could see.
Yeah, and I think this week we're supposed to be getting some more, kind of a booklet that we'll need to get through.
Right.
You guys or the planning commission?
Us.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty quick turnaround, but maybe that.
Right.
But it would be useful.
I think the challenge for us, which we talked about with the consultant, was, you know, smart growth only uses the ball when it's got that last half group, and so is much more used to that kind of environment. And so I think it would be good for us to spend some time thinking that through, and we hope to, you know, shape the workshop to our needs pretty closely.
Okay. Well, let's get down to the subdivision race, huh?
It's not on there, but if you're comfortable talking about it, James, I sent a few of them up on the, on the procedural stuff of subdivision regulations. It's Article II, the application procedures, and I could find a better way. So if you've got the previous one, you can ask them.
Is this the same thing you emailed me?
Yes, it is.
Do you have it ready?
Yeah, I got it.
So with this, we have the old one, it was separated, separated out by preliminary plan review and final plan review. What I did here is, I think most applicants are more used to whether or not they have the application. So I tried to do the procedures, if you have a minor subdivision, you could add it. If we do, I think that in itself, and then the application tools that we need to provide are not tabled on that, but there's...
Why did we get rid of the table?
Why did I get rid of the table?
Just curious.
I'm sorry.
Why?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
I could put this in a table, but it's longer. The description of what they need to provide is longer, but I think in the end, it ends up being a little bit more concise. I could try to, you know, create some sort of table.
I like that.
I think that when I put it in a table, it looks like we're requiring a lot.
Huge amount of things.
For minors, you know, just in general, I think it's kind of specific, and I envision that it's going to be a lot of different requests, whether it's like in words, or some of the details that we're looking for. For example, the location in front of the walking, the workers' car, it's on the front of the subdivision, the block type, the location, where you... You might want to spend some more time on it, and maybe I can...
I'm not saying you should, I was just curious.
If I already came from the tables for the previous iteration, would it be something that we really like? However, I think what makes the distinction between minor and major more, and there in this latter version?
Everything that we...
I have a comment.
Oh, sorry.
I just didn't see performance guarantee in the alternate.
Yeah.
It is, um...
15, 10. 15, 10, 16, 15.
And with that bonding of performance guarantee, what I like about this version is it's more to inspection than exactly how we go about doing the bonding and security.
Great.
I think that this is a, it makes the role of the town a lot clearer, and I think that when you're talking about utilities and roads, that is open to towns' interest, and I think having inspections and having anything more is important. I think sometimes...
Seems nice.
I think that the sketch plan, which we had previously called a conceptual consultation, and that, that conceptual consultation was written so that only the applicant could request it. The sketch plan can be requested by either the applicant, the zoning administrator, the chair, and the DRB, which I like to develop, that any of those that felt that needed would be all of the sketch plan. We don't think it'd be too frequent.
We think that this might facilitate early, you know, semi, or, you know, early informal discussion between the board and the applicant, where the applicant in particular is not somebody who is professionally engaged in the division design process, or development process. So what we have in mind here is, if there are concerns or reservations on the part of any participant in the process, they can utilize this sketch plan discussion to resolve some issues before, you know, it gets too expensive or difficult to resolve.
So are we supposed to do something about this?
We're the first, but I don't know if there's a general reaction to see it working.
Okay. No, we're not approving anything. You're just showing us, that's right?
Yeah, this is like the sketch plan.
Is this, okay. Then you intend to come back with something else? What else needs to be changed?
In here?
Yeah.
I don't think anything else needs to be changed, unless you really have a table or not, and you want to get, and it's not that.
No, it's not that.
You know, it could be that if it's a table, people might want to waive it more than if it's written.
Yeah, I mean, all I could imagine that might be useful is not constructing a table so much as a checklist. But that's kind of a subtlety that I want to sort of mull over a while.
Well, if this is close to final, I know only Liz and I saw this before the meeting, but why don't we take this home and think about making a motion at the next meeting once everybody else has had a chance to look at it? Can you email it around so the people who weren't here tonight get it?
I'll get it.
So, and I was...
I do have a question. This is B1 and B2, this is for minor or major site plan? Is this a subdivision site plan? Google.
2.10.
Section 10. 2.10. So I guess I'm just, I'm curious about when somebody will...
Whether it'll be retired. It's generally, it would be for a major subdivision, if they're proposing a new road, or water or sewer line extension. We probably, as talked in the past, that there's been built, major subdivisions are out there, and then somebody else gets caught finishing the road, or that's generally the one. But it could be making stormwater improvements, and shit like that. The town has seemed to use development, day-to-day habit, funding, which I've shared in the past,
And do you feel like that fits into the, when somebody's going for these approvals, does that typically fit in with timeline of somebody getting funding? And in their process, if somebody's going to build a subdivision, and they have to put in a road and all these utilities, they're hiring all these people to help them out with the process. When they come before you, do you typically find that everyone has their lending and financial agreements in place?
Let me take a step back. I would say, in the time that I've been here, we have had very small-scale subdivisions, and not had a mechanism whereby we've been asked for sure bond, or a form of bond, or something, or something similar, or money escrow. And the financial backing or the package that the developer is, has put together, you know, is not part of discussions, and we're not aware of it. And it's generally, I'd say, on a scale where it's not a consortium, or a collaborative arrangement, or, you know, the bank of finance end of the project they've put together is not apparent in terms of the review process. And I've worked with other communities where, you know, it's very clearly a team that people have come together, including the financial, if you like. And their resources are, you know, they're aware of their financial resources, of what they need to do to move the project through. So it's not really come up here. I'd say, but further back, there's a history of subdivisions being initiated by LLC-type firms that are made up of people who've come together for, you know, a specific project. And typically, all of the bank has been the financial backing, and that it goes for control before the subdivision is even platted out, completed total. Or in the last instance, the road was constructed, including the stormwater, the parcels were platted out, and, you know, recorded, but the venture still went broke. And then subsequently, another buyer came along and bought the entire subdivision. So what I'd say is that this makes clear that the town is aware that there are costs that often accrue to them when a project takes a very long time to finish, or the original initiators of the project are not around in the end, because they make agreements with the people at the beginning, and they're not necessarily the same people that finish it. Right? Right? So...
So what if, what if they do swap hands during the process?
Well, they, they've gone, that would be, you know, they'd have to maintain the sure bond or performance bond. That would just be a requirement of the new, you know, whoever picks it up has to pick up that, that part too.
So why don't we put on the agenda to vote on this next time? And if anybody has things to say, that'll be the time. So try to be conversant with this piece, Article 2, and this is your chance to have your hands on an ordinance. So it's a good idea.
Well, it's just, it's a piece of an ordinance.
A piece of an ordinance. An important piece of an ordinance.
Yeah.
An important piece of an important ordinance.
It's all very important.
Yeah. So let's talk about environmental standards, lot size averaging and building envelopes.
So, when we lost that, we had, um, as scheduled, there's something we're going to talk about, kind of the environmental standards of the subdivision regulations. There's a found that was still going on until last week, as far as public life, but I did send you some information. Um, so what we're trying to accomplish with the subject of regulations is that there is thoughtful citing and locating of lots and potentially building sites within a lot through the restoration to natural and cultural features of the lot. Um, we talked early on about the conservation subdivision as a way of clustering. Um, we're a little bit concerned that it could be a little bit, that we don't have the levels of development and that it can be a little bit complex for the types of subdivisions that we are having. But we liked the idea of clustering on a property. We liked the idea of, um, having flexible lot sizes.
At the last meeting, didn't we kind of incorporate the clustering aspects into the all site plan?
Yes. But one of the, one of the issues that I've been trying to work out is, so we're allowing this clustering, how do we do that through the zoning? Or how do we, you know, it could be a subdivision in the rural district with a minimum lot size of three acres, but in order to encourage the clustering, we're allowing smaller lot size. So how can we, how can we do that without making it, um, forming and, you know, having it a bit too much? That's the challenge right now. Um, so that's where this lot size averaging document that I sent you, um, came in, that's one way of being able to do it. But that's not really directly to the zoning.
I'm concerned if we do the building envelope, if we have an envelope, an ordinance requiring a set building envelope, that there be some relief for a subsequent landowner.
Could you speak of relief for...
Sorry. That there be some relief for a subsequent landowner in case the person who subdivided the lots is careless. Because I think a lot of people who subdivide lots might be. And might simply say, well, just make the envelopes work, especially if we have a large minimum lot size, say.
Right.
You know, there could be multiple envelopes on multiple plots.
Right.
And I'd just like there to be some way where someone could buy the plot, he could buy the land, and if there was another suitable site, build there. I mean, it'd be silly if there was, say, a plot where there was high ground and a potential view, but just because the person before wanted to get the land sold quickly and didn't think about it.
Presumably you mean, um, a parcel that is undeveloped?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. You know, I think that, um, there could be a kind of a, you know, a review process or a request for reassigning the building envelope or something like that. I don't know whether it's correct to not review, because we have criteria.
Sure.
Um, so it's not anything that we couldn't do. So, yeah, I can conceive of one of the factors changing there is that if the original subdivider assumed that all the subsequent homeowners in the subdivision wanted to be as close to the road as possible to take advantage of the shortest possible distance for power lines, and then somebody in a rural setting, and then somebody decides that they don't even want to walk up to the grid, then they don't have the same constraint. So they may actually want to be on the back of it, doing a parcel rather than the front.
I would.
Right. So...
But however, while ideally, you know, you want to be at the back of the parcel, the greater goal is to not have force fragmentation or this and that. So, I mean, that's, that's part of reviewing where the building envelope would be because you're looking at those issues.
Yeah, that's by the actual assets.
Per parcel?
At the town subdivision, yes. And it doesn't have to be so tight. The example that Brad, um, just passed out, um, the Richmond one.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at the second bullet point, it says, in a certain based in soil and water conservation district requires a maximum building of 25,000 square feet or the minimum required for water rezoning. And that's a pretty big...
Yes.
A half acre?
More than, more than that.
Oh.
Um, so that's giving a lot of options and at the same time, at a point of subdivision, you're looking at a very different...
Right.
And this, this applies to rural, rural residential, industrial?
I was thinking that for us, it'd probably be the most appropriate for a residential rural, minimal rural.
Right.
And who decides where that building envelope line is? Is this the owner of the property?
The subdivider.
The subdivider.
They propose it, and it's part of the review and approval process of the D of A.
So it would be on the plan that they submit. So if you look at the example that I sent you, and this is also a, I don't think it's drawn, um, if you look at the, please, if you can, that, that could show on the...
I mean the...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. What do you do when you have a, um, non-conforming small lot? Well, I guess it wouldn't apply because you can't subdivide.
Right. Can't subdivide.
So what are the, the current rules around this stuff? People can just propose the building space and it gets approved or not approved without...
No.
We don't require them to indicate where the building envelope would be. And then in Vermont, you can't do site plan review on one or two family dwellings. So once the lot's created, they need to meet the set facts, but they can...
Right.
So what's the process by which an applicant for, I guess it's for subdivision, would have a lot and he determines, you know, where the stream is and where the building, who reviews that?
So it would be part of the D of A and final plan process.
And would it be something that it is in a minor subdivision, the zoning officer reviews?
No, minor subdivisions still go before the development review board. So we could make the building envelope be a requirement that revised article doesn't have that, whereas the initial one was going to be more identifying the resources inside the file. But you, you know, in the standards, you have standards that guide the placement of the building envelope on the site. So you could say it couldn't be within the special flood hazard area or it cannot be on slopes greater than 25% or where, whatever we're trying to protect.
So this is part of subdivision. Is there an, um, a matching component to the site plan review? That identifies the environmental resources to be protected?
There is not right now. We don't have building envelopes for that kind of review.
But we could?
We could. If, if we were to follow this track and implement building envelopes, then I'd expect to see it turn up in the zoning ordinance also.
I mean, it makes more sense to me to point out the things that we want to protect rather than to define specific spaces.
Uh, I would say that the building envelope is identified in response to the, you know, the things that you want to protect. So in other words, you would arrive at the building envelope by establishing that, that there are no attributes in that inside the envelope that are so significant or important for other reasons that it doesn't matter if they go away, if they disappear. Because you, you're talking about the, the area of disturbance or the area of that.
Right.
And we're talking, I think that important thing to remember here is that we're talking about pretty generous, if we follow the Richmond rule, we're talking about a very generous envelope. Like 25,000 square feet allows you, you know, 12, 2,000 square foot palms, you know, I mean, like, that's a lot of, there's a lot of moving around. If you imagine a piece of paper and you've got to scale, and then you've got your little scaly house and you're moving it around inside the circle that is the building envelope, it gives you a lot of different possible permutations for its final destination. Right? So I think the notion that somehow it's harming or, or overly confining to the potential homeowner or applicant is, is somewhat, um, offset by the mathematical reality that you get endless permutations within this big circle.
So how do you prevent a situation that would, say, you have an acre of land, let's say you have five acres of land or whatever, and you, somebody comes before the DRB and says, all right, well, here's the building envelope line. There have been a couple times on the DRB that I've seen people bring Crayola drawings and it's like, okay, what, what else is on this site? And a lot of, you know, if this is out in the middle of nowhere, we may or may not have been there before or seen it or know what they're talking about. So how, how does the DRB know and whether, what, I'm not even saying somebody's trying to slide one past them, but it might be in their best interest to not build on a really steep grade, but they're like, oh, well, you know, there's going to be a great view, yeah, but now you can't afford to build here. So you're making the land totally useless.
Well, there's a couple of things that I would say here. I would say as a matter of practice, the D of A could benefit enormously from the presumption that they do site visits rather than the presumption that they don't. Um, and the current practice is that they operate on the presumption that they don't. And I think that it might be beneficial if they switch that around and just assume that they were going to do site visits unless they were all personally very familiar with the, with the site in question and that what was being proposed was pretty straightforward. So that means a level of scrutiny and involvement with the physical attributes of the site that I think, um, could be beneficial. That's the first point. And then the second point would be that, um, you can still require the applicant to undertake even a fairly, even if it's a minor subdivision, a fairly rudimentary survey of, of the land in question. I don't mean, you know, the professional surveyor, I mean, okay, here's a big stand of pines, here's, um, you know, some semi-abandoned area of Christmas tree harvesting that, you know, they're all three feet tall and it doesn't matter to me whether they stay or go. Here's a big rock out prop that's pretty difficult to build on, um, and all for the side of septic. So here I go, you know, these are places I think I can put my driveways, these are places I think I can put my septic systems, these are places I think I can put my house sites.
But who thinks that? Person who's subdividing?
Yeah, the subdivide, the person who's making the subdivision application.
Well, isn't this the type of thing where you'd want to have an engineer on the town side review the application?
Um, I think that would be also extremely beneficial. I think, uh, and we've had that practice in the past.
I'm not sure that they would be involved so much with the environmental features of the site.
Right.
I mean, I think that it's kind of type, you know, to some extent, you do need to tighten up over it something.
Yes.
There's sources out, I mean, you could get a USGS map and contours and then you'll see streams and...
But it, would, would we require that? I mean, it seems like specifically with topography, there's a lot of stuff that would dictate whether or not, how, how usable a site is, whether it's access or building.
We don't, you know, the, we don't have a great deal of refined topographical information. We depend on the U S T S, which is, you know, plus or minus 20 feet of them going along the line. So, you know, there's definitely limitations to the data that we have access to. On the other hand, um, I think that even in a very preliminary fashion, it's reasonable to ask, um, applicants to characterize the, the landform and the topography and what the key features are. So, um, we know, for instance, whether any map whitelands. Um, this, this, we know that they're out of date, but we have wildlife habitat information. Um, we have a whole lot of different sets of information that we can support the applicant, um, using. And there are other, you know, sources in town. And what I'd say is, you know, it's up, this is where, this is a moment where that sketch plan discussion between the applicant and the D of A could be instructive precisely around these sort of issues because they should be presenting with at least, you know, the basic information that we're looking for now, that we're discussing now, and it could be elaborated on, um, you know, as a consequence. So that's sketch plan discussion. I think that, um, what we're trying to encourage you, the applicant, is then addressing the impacts of the subdivision from the standpoint of natural resources.
Well, that sounds important to me. But also if steep slopes are going to be part of the site plan, then the slope should be calculated into the building envelope, if it can or can't be built upon.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Of course, if we have a bunch of 10 acre lots out there, that's not necessarily that easy.
Can you change these after 10, five years? Can the building envelope line be adjusted?
We just talked about that a little bit. I think, you know, maybe a review.
I think so. I see mechanisms, I think it's in Australia where, you know, if it's a...
It's crazy.
It would just come back before the development review board for...
That's, what you're, the concerns you're expressing are the reason I think there should be some relief for a buyer.
Yeah. Yeah. I, yeah, I guess I just, I, yeah. Having somebody who owns a piece of property who may or may not have ever been there before, I mean, more than likely they have. But them just saying, yeah, this looks good, just makes me think that you, you bring an architect or an engineer out there and they're like, why would you want to build here? You probably want to build over there.
I think, you know, I, I think we don't want to close off the opportunity for somebody to undertake the subdivision process, particularly a minor subdivision on, you know, without, without calling on the resources and skills of professionals, but we still feel like it's fair to ask them to furnish this information. At some point, I think it becomes, obviously it becomes beneficial to engage a, you know, a professional to discuss the best way to proceed with the subdivision and...
People around here don't do that though.
Well, we need to move on by our standard.
So, well, yeah, I mean...
You know, I think...
So the seller has certain interests in identifying this in order to sell the property, but the buyer and who was presumably also the builder may have different ideas. And so that's why you'd want to have the relief that James was talking about.
Right. Um, you know what I...
But one of the reasons that we regulate subdivisions too is that we want the town to lay out a development pattern that they want.
to lay out a development pattern that we want, and if that includes protecting, not having fragmentation, protecting certain things, this is, it's a little bit simple way of achieving.
This is the way you achieve it.
You know, it's not the way it's being done right now, but it's done in most other towns and the law.
I've got no beef with the process.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be expensive, and it doesn't have to be so procedurally or methodologically demanding that a fairly competent property owner couldn't negotiate. So in other words, I can think of farmers with farmland in town who would not be at all baffled or confronted by meeting the expectations that we're laying out, because they're used to thinking in those terms. And they can draw out on the plan exactly what the assets that their property contains are, you know, and so what we're asking them to do is to contain, you know, is to include that information in their application, and then to actually reflect on that information that we've just asked them to include, in terms of where you want to put the poles, boundary lines, and services, including roads and so forth, and where within that you expect to be able to locate a home, you know, a potential home site that minimizes the impact on the natural assets that you've just identified. So I don't see it as being a deeply problematic or challenging process for somebody that's engaged with the land, and presumably the seller should be in that circumstance, now if they're from away, or they're not really, if they've inherited it, or they've never seen it, or, there's all, there's endless, you know, possibilities as to how somebody did end up in this situation, and then, yeah, the recommendation would be spend some money, not, and I wouldn't necessarily say it's huge, but spend some money on a design professional work review to provide that information. I think, you know, the land, the land that we're talking about is special land that's been identified in a planned process. It's a special landscape that the community, the wider community has identified as a community-wide asset and resource, even though it's predominantly in private hands. And so there's sort of a custodial function that we're emphasizing here that's different from, say, you know, somebody proposing the subdivision right on the edge of an existing suburban neighborhood in West Brattleboro or something, where they pretty much want to mirror, you know, what's on the next street, and you're sort of like, okay, you know, go for it.
Are we talking about some specific piece of land, or are we talking about this as?
We're talking about the rural and rural residential areas in town, which constitute the working landscapes of the town that have been called out as special assets in the town plan.
Okay, so, so I just want to make sure I understand the process. So if somebody comes in front of the DRB, does all this, figure out where their building envelopes are going to be, everything passes, County Falls Park, they don't build anything, now when they go to sell it, is the buyer now restricted to that, to those sites?
Yes.
Yes, just like in any regular subdivision.
They're recorded, right?
They're recorded, right. And, you know, you can change that, but there's costs and challenges associated with changing it. You know, you could do a bare bones, really conventional, five parcels, you know, five parcels, two on each side of the street and one at the top, you know, cul-de-sac. You do a bare bones, basic subdivision like that right now in Brattleboro. You go and record it at the town clerk's office, and then nothing happens for 10 years, and you die, and then your kids get to deal with the problem. For them to change it is, you know, exactly the same process, they're going to have to basically start over, you know, even if nothing has happened, because you're going to have to undo what's reported at the town clerk's office.
The building envelope only applies to land that's being subdivided.
Yes.
Yes.
At a certain point. So do you think it's going to be confusing at some point when half the properties in rural residential have a building envelope requirement and the other half don't, because they never had to?
No, because it's, it's like everything else with standards, you know, it's like this, you know, the only thing with a parallel, I was thinking a building goes, this one around here, but, you know, zoning requirements change all the time, all right? And so you just have to know which property you're talking about and at what point it becomes, you know, a factor, so.
And it just becomes another, you know, so somebody comes in to build a home, and then the zoning administrator will pull the subdivision plan and see if there's a building envelope, has it been built in the envelope? I think the other thing that you can do with a building envelope, I think it addresses kind of the, I guess for the environmental standards, I think there's two things going on. There's density and settlement patterns, and I see that promoting, a building envelope is a good tool to promote the settlement pattern that we want. Even if you think about the town plan hearing where Mr. Herbert did come and spoke about increasing the minimum lot sizes, and he said, you know, where he lives, he likes this kind of cluster, and he wouldn't want neighbors farming. You could also have standards that promote that farmstead area that he lives in, which is better than the sprawly.
Kind of like a two-tier, that if you're going to have housing, it's one area, and if you're going to have a farm, it's a larger area? Can you do that?
Or, well, when you're just looking at the building envelope, you know, say there's this area kind of like where he knows where he lives. We just saw some stunning pictures of him looking down from this round mountain, looking down over that area. I mean, you can imagine situations where somebody puts a house and breaks up that beautiful landscape, or you can use the building envelope to kind of nestle it in where the other structures are, creating that farmstead field. So you can protect both the natural, natural resources and you get a desired settlement pattern.
Right, so even what I would describe as a fairly conventional, along-the-road development, if you look at page 28 on the handout on lot size averaging, one side is not given. This goes to your point, I think, Kimberly, and some of what you want to do. Do you see the original passport that's up is just a farmhouse in a cloud field? The farmer originally wants to sell. You've got large lot zoning, and you've got the two roads that form the perimeter to the farmer's original field, and the easy thing to do is to divide it into four. And between the homeowners not wanting to look at each other out the window and the regular rectangle pattern of the farmer's field, you end up with a very expensive in terms of impact on open space, but very conventional sort of what I would call very low-density suburban-style subdivision. And then the one on the bottom, you see that the farmer's field, a good chunk of the farmer's field is protected so that working landscape thing is actually in place. And what you get is you get the four homes, still pretty conventional in terms of their layout, they've all got a driveway on a, on a road, they've all got privacy to some extent in boundaries and fences and so forth. But it's clear here that what they've done is include the calculation of the protected farm field in determining the final size of those four, you know, those four parcels for the subdivision. So in return for them being able to access the benefits of the large protected farm field, they've got their rural setting, they've got a small cluster of houses that's pretty efficient in terms of bus stops, school bus stops, and mailboxes and all that kind of stuff, all the stuff that kind of is peripheral but still important. And it's not a major impact on the farm field. So it's just, I mean, I might prefer that the four homes are all clustered off one driveway, you know, sort of an arc or a semicircle or something, and the impact on the farm field is even less. But, you know, this is not, this is not a bad outcome in that sense, and it has a lot more kind of conventional appearance to it. But it's a much more efficient use of the available land, and I think that's the part that we're trying to get at with this whole process. And the more you're familiar with the geometry of how this goes together, the more you can see ways in which, what we mean by efficient use of land is that, you know, the reward, if you like, the benefit is that protection of the free existing landscape that we regard as valuable. And so that's what we're trying to encourage, either through clustering or averaging or something else.
And I think, I saw one model, I mean, this is, in my mind, it goes to something else, but in terms of the applicant not having access to information, they can kind of accept what the town has for GIS data on it, and if they want to go with that, that could be a cheap and easy way if we provided some data.
How is our GIS data?
Yeah.
Would it be enough, the way it is right now, to accomplish what we envisioned?
Maybe in combination with some standard stuff from the state, like wildlife habitat and stuff, yes.
Things you could access on the internet?
We have that.
Yeah.
Those are layers on what we have on the website, right?
Yep.
I don't think we have the wildlife information on the big town.
I know, was it, yeah.
Hinsdale does.
It definitely has all that.
Who does?
Hinsdale. Remember my, my admiration of their maps?
They have a lot of lot of lot.
What, you're talking about animals or?
No.
Or wall?
So we could have some sort of process where, you know, you use the data that we have, which is pretty much from the state anyway, or you could hire a professional.
Right.
But it's certainly something that you could do with published sources.
Yes, I don't, I think we could simply direct an applicant or somebody interested in pursuing it to the appropriate resources, you know. And at this point, to be really honest, even starting with something as basic as Google Earth is a huge advance, you know, of where we might have been five years ago, and that's as good a place as any to send an applicant just to sit and think about what it is that they've got, you know? Like, oh, look, two-thirds of your, the proposed area is heavily wooded and, you know, appears to be a steep slope, you know, I mean, it's.
Let me ask my fellow board members, is there some consensus that raising the minimum lot size in rural and rural residential in combination with cluster development, like on the 28, page 28 illustration, is a good idea?
It's not a real cluster, I would say, just to interrupt it.
Well, or cluster.
It's not clustering, to say.
Or even closer, but I mean, I don't mean exactly like that, but to this general concept, do we all buy into that, or is that something we should discuss more?
I do. I think this example is, better portrays what I think we want to achieve, as opposed to this on page one.
And this one from Rhode Island, it furthers the same idea that we had in the, what's that, conservation subdivision that we talked about.
I would agree, I mean, it furthers looking at what's on the property and then designing around. It doesn't quite get to clustering yet.
Right.
Kimberly, you're on board?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay. Are there more questions we want to talk about, Jim?
Actually, I have to leave. Sorry.
We don't have to resolve it tonight, I'm just trying to figure out what we disagree about, so we can have the staff flesh it out for us.
And I don't know what you think.
Like, can we get some draft language to look at for the remedy that I talked about? The buyer's remedy, you might call it.
Do we have a digital copy of this one?
I can send it.
Jim, I was just asking while you were gone if there's a general consensus among us that raising the minimum lot size in rural and rural residential and having there be cluster development and this identification of natural resources and envelopes to exclude those from development is a good idea. Got three A's, one maybe.
So raising the minimum, I'm not sure I agree with, but I do like the idea, but I really do like the cluster development. All the other parts, I like, I just don't know if we need to raise them in.
They could be separate issues, too.
I don't think we intend to raise the minimum unless there's clustering, right?
Well, raising the minimum lot size would come under zoning, so at this point, that's not really.
That's not quite on table.
Okay, but I liked it, I really liked the clustering.
Okay, so we'd be providing for clustering here, and then later on, we have the conversation about raising lot size once there's that option available.
Right, and so I would.
But I'm still a little, I'm still working through, how can we get to allowing clustering?
Right. Yeah, I get pretty nervous when.
There are no ways to get there, it's just, we make it work.
And there's clustering with a large subdivision, but then there's also, you know, this averaging on a single site.
Yes.
And both have the same concept of protecting natural resources.
Yeah, but this lot size averaging has to come through zoning first, it needs to be enabled and kind of, again, what is the desired density, and then getting to a maximum lot size or whatever. So.
Trick.
When I first looked at it, I thought, oh, this could work, and then it was like, oh, we're doing subdivision first, so it gets a little bit tricky. So there is, just generally going back to enabling a conservation subdivision, and if it's used, then that's great. And if it's not, then it's there until it is, since that's not the worst thing either, to have it there.
What do you think?
Me?
Yeah, you.
I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just concerned because I see, I mean, I probably, because they're more likely to lead to litigation, see messed up parcels more often than anybody. And I'm especially conscious about avoiding creating by subdivision a parcel that loses its value, because the seller's only motivation is to sell, and the buyer, I think, will have more particular ideas about what to do with the land than the seller. But as long as we have that protection for the buyer that they have some remedy, I think all of the ideas are good.
Yeah, I think they demonstrate both common sense and resource protection.
Do you have any further thoughts, Mark?
Not at this time.
Jim?
No, I agree with everything you said, actually. I think you're right, I think you're right on.
Great.
So we just want to make sure as we go forward, what really is going to happen, what's going to get triggered in the zone more than is going to end up living in the zone more than someone else is going to live in the subdivision for us. Obviously, there's a couple of different points where we want to make sure that there's not a conflict or that they play together well. And in general, I think, we, you know, I mean, I think the ultimate goal, I think everyone seems to be agreed on, is as far as practical protecting the natural resource and the working landscapes as far as we can.
Yep.
That's really good direction.
Okay. I learned a lot from the town plan process about trying to give good direction as we're going through this. Is there anything you guys are curious about that you want to hear from us, besides what we talked about?
I think at this point, we're okay, there might be some things, I feel, I feel like it needs a little bit of work and thinking on our part before it's ready to go back to you for the final stamp. So I want to play with different scenarios in the office and see how it plays out.
If we are able to bring Article Two back, and there are changes in between what you sent to us and what you have to the meeting, can you highlight then? And maybe send it around again? And outside of Article Two and natural resource protection, how many other elements are we, do we need to review on the subdivision regs? do we need to review on the subdivision regs?
I think there were five articles.
Yeah.
And, sorry, six.
If there's anything else that's ready, why don't you send it out with Article Two? And that way, we can maximize our homework.
I think in total, there'll be five, but depending on how we deal with the clustering, getting to allowing the clustering, that might need to be a separate article.
Okay. And I view the intervening time for us to review those articles as when we should be familiarizing ourselves with this and figuring out what we want to, you know, if there's something you don't like, I hope we know it going into the next meeting.
Right. I mean, and I want to throw back on you guys, it's always hard to, you know, answer a question like this, which is, what is it, if you've got some misgivings or some areas of uncertainty, what is it that you would like, or what do you think would be helpful coming from us to demonstrate, you know, these kind of models of subdivision? So in other words, if you've still got some reservations about how cluster subdivisions work, or the other mechanisms that we're talking about, what is it that you'd like to see more of? Do you want to see, you know, there's the, there's a diagram that I just walked through for averaging, but we could find similar ones that result in a cluster. Do you want to see more, you know, illustrations like that, that basically, you know, show you what, what the various outcomes are, you know, conventional versus, you know, cluster or something, is that what you need more of? Or would you need to see more examples of other communities' language that's been adopted and how that works, or what is it that you would need for reassurance?
It feels to me like the challenge is, well, at least the challenge for me, isn't that I don't understand the concept, I actually like the concept and have always thought it was a great thing before I was ever on the planning commission. Is the challenge, how do we actually get it into the reg so that it's workable? I mean, is that the, is that the challenge here?
What's one challenge?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Okay. So I have no idea how you do that.
Well, certainly our concern is to make sure that it's, you know, yeah, that it's a seamless process, that it's effective, that it's straightforward enough for people to work with and not throw their hands up and go, oh my God, you guys, you know, Richmond's got it much better organized than this, I mean, that's not what we want here. We want to say, oh yeah, it's just like Somerset's really good.
Yeah, cluster development is not terrible, doesn't feel that complex. I mean, I can, I can imagine how legally getting all the right words around it would be complex, but the concept is not complex.
Do we?
Am I, am I speaking out of turn?
No. Do we have towns identified that have done this?
Uh, there's some of those articles.
The cluster or the conservation?
The cluster or the conservation, either way.
There's a list on page thirty-one.
I mean, I can, I can find it. I think there are some in Vermont.
Says Hartland, you got that?
Yeah.
That's a nice catch right there.
Yeah, Hartland doesn't... Really can get the flexible lot size, as they have, but they don't have cluster because I've looked at it very much.
Can we try to get some input from someone that's done this? Is that hard to do?
Pretty sure there's communities in Massachusetts that have it.
It's not common in a large number of communities.
It's common in Western Mass.
Western Mass seems like a nice place to me. Can we call a couple of planners in towns where that's happened and see what has come up afterwards? Because, I mean, if we all agree on the concept, it seems to me our main goal should be to avoid collateral damage.
Well, I think when we get this center on again, the message should include, if you're, if you have more questions, if you're not comfortable, you know, reach out before the meeting so that we can do some deciding.
Yeah, and you can, and this phase is sort of what might be described as the post-plan phase, when we're going to go back before the select board and recommend some pretty strong, strong changes in direction. It's really important that, that we feel confident enough to carry, you know, to carry that forward. And so part of it is, you know, of course, as we go forward with this, and that's why the workshop, the EPA workshop is also going to be important, is, is to bring the public with us. So, you know, both these things need attention, how to, how to, you know, educate the public and the, and select with themselves, and then how to make sure that the new regulations are operational, you know.
And there's a third, to make sure that we have evidence that it meets the goals that it's intended to serve.
Yes.
And in that vein, if you can find as close an analog to Brattleboro, whether it's Western Mass or otherwise, just in size and layout, I think that's more, it's helpful for us, not only because it's a similar test, but because we can say that it's worked without problems, if it has, in other places, or try to fix whatever problems they've encountered.
I think, you know, this might be, I hope, I hope we can, I hope this is not true. What I'd say is in the communities where this has been adopted, it's been adopted because people have been distressed over a long period of time about the loss of what they regard as a valuable asset. And so they've come to resolve that problem by adopting these kinds of regulations. And what we're trying to do is initiate growth and, and, you know, trigger growth of a certain, of a certain kind of quality. And so we're going to encounter, I think, the argument that whatever we suggest, because it's more restrictive than what is in place right now, we're going to chill growth.
Right.
And so it's going to be difficult for us to demonstrate, but important for us to demonstrate that in fact, by adopting good quality regulations, we're going to foster the right kind of growth. I think that if we go to look in other communities, what I suspect we'll find is unhappiness with the speed and insensitivity of development, and so therefore, that's how those communities adopted for, you know, more finely tuned regulations.
Am I correct that in Brattleboro, most of the development has been in rural and rural residential? The growth? Did one of you say that when we were doing the town plan? Am I wrong?
No.
Probably not.
No.
You know.
But the goals that this, this type of control would address would be sustainability, flood control, smart growth, and protection of natural resources.
Right, right, it's a perfect match for the other propositions and communities that are in the town plan.
And I think it, I see it as enabling the conservation subdivision, if you choose to go that route, you could make it mandatory, but maybe that's a choice thing. And then by having the building envelopes, that's kind of as similar at its minimum as doing those two.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I mean, I would love to see cluster development or cluster approaches to subdivisions almost kind of mandatory, or the conservation subdivision strategies mandatory in rural and rural residential districts. I think a bare minimum would be the implementation of the, the building envelope.
Do you envision every building envelope having to go before the DRB?
A little bit.
Yeah?
I'm a, do you mean for major, minor, and major? Because I'm a little on the fence about minor.
I was just thinking that we can combat the allegation that this stymies development by trying to get stuff through the zoning administrator where it's smaller, where the risk is less.
I think for minor, we could establish pretty clear criteria and have the applicant demonstrate that met the criteria, and have the, the zoning administrator, you know, rule, and then if the applicant, you know, the applicant still has their eye on the field, I think we could do it that way.
And the butterwood, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, yes, we have to, the warning, you know, notification process might need to be, but, yeah.
That seems like a sensible idea to me.
I think so, too.
Do you think we could go with that, successfully?
Let's try it and see what it looks like, and if it's bad, we'll treasure it, and if it's good, we'll do it. I think we've about exhausted this conversation, unless anybody disagrees with us, right?
I think we're good.
Let's go on.
Can I ask one question? This should be a fast one. The EPA building blocks, April 16th and 17th, is that all day, or are those four to seven? What is the...
The 16th will probably be some sort of evening presentation, you know, about, I'm not really sure, we're working out the schedule. The 17th will be probably an all-day, nine to four.
Okay, all right. Is that good?
I'll entertain.
So get your taxes done before.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, it passes four, nothing.